... sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and this is the last meeting of the year and the meeting before Christmas and New Years. So, at this time, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, I'm going to invite our Chaplain Reverend Patrick Womack to come forward and give our invocation. So if anyone would please stand for the Pledge. Thank you.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which is standing on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Almighty Lord, you who are wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace, we praise you and thank you for the privilege of meeting together to conduct this business this evening. We pray again for your kind and gracious bestowal of wisdom and discernment on these our Commissioners. Lord, help them in their conversation together as they listen to reports and decide matters. Help them, Lord, to take the long view, as we pray that you might grant to all of us the insight to be able to decide matters based on the long term and rather than facing short-term fixes. But, Father, grant to us that peace which you provided for us. We pray that in it we may seek you in all matters, trusting you with all of our hearts and leaning not on our un-understanding and finding that you will direct our paths. So please make them straight, as we pray your provision for those who are in need in this season, praying for shelter and warmth, praying for food and clothing, praying that justice may come where needed, and otherwise that you will be glorified. For we pray in the name of our Prince of Peace. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Womack. We always appreciate you coming and doing that for us. Thank you. Okay, our next order of business will be called a public hearing, and we have none tonight. So we'll move on to the public comment session. Would anyone like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment session. We'll move on to constituent concerns. Tommy, do you have any tonight?
No.
Brian?
No, I've already addressed the ones that I have. Actually, I've got another one I need to get with Mr. Morehead soon as the meetings are over.
Great.
I don't have any.
Okay, all right. And just want to say we had great weather for the parades, and I'm thankful for that. Okay, our next order of business is Administrative Agency Reports and Presentations, and we had scheduled our annual audit report tonight, but they were still collecting some data. So I asked Brian to provide an update through October of our financial situation. So Brian, if you would do that, we'd appreciate it.
I'll quickly go over some broad strokes of our general fund activity through the end of October. Got some pretty good news, so we'll get to it. Current year property tax, just so you have some context, last year's budget was about thirty-nine point three million in property tax. Through October of last year, we brought in seven point five million. Current year, the budget's thirty-nine point six, an increase of three hundred and five thousand, and we've brought in nine point one million. So we're about one point six million ahead of last year in dollars, but as a percent, we've brought in twenty-three percent of our budget versus nineteen last year, so three point eight-five percent ahead. It's great news. It's fantastic news, actually. Vehicle taxes, similar story, that the budget over last year was about four hundred and seventy-one thousand. We're ahead of last year's budget by sixty-nine thousand. As a percentage, though, we're about two point eight-eight percent behind last year as far as making budget. But that's not to be too concerned about. This revenue comes from the state, and just looking at it through October, maybe we'll come back and give you December's information, and we've caught up, not too alarmed about it right now. Prior year's taxes, budget over budget was just a forty-five thousand dollar increase, but we're ahead of collections by three hundred and seven thousand dollars. As a percentage, though, it's an amazing story. We've collected sixty-seven point fifteen percent of budget as compared to last year at forty-one percent of budget, so we're twenty-five percent ahead of where we were last year in prior year taxes. Any questions on any of those? Sales tax, total budget, we increased by about seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand from nineteen to twenty. Year-to-date, we're ahead by eighty-eight thousand dollars. As a percentage, they're really close. We've brought in eight point eight-one percent of budget compared to last year of eight point six-five. So we are on track to make sales tax, but it's extremely close. Also, on the, sales tax lags ninety days, so we really don't have that much data to go on. As we go through the fiscal year, that number will, the trend will expose itself more. So those revenues together are about sixty-eight percent of total general fund revenues. So I've collapsed everything else because they get fairly small. All other revenue, we increased a million two from nineteen to twenty. We're up about four hundred and eight thousand dollars in dollars. As a percentage, again, the trend is really close, twenty-seven point three-six percent of budget this year compared to twenty-seven point ten of last year. So that gives us some confidence that we're right in line with budget. Revenues are coming in. We'll point out that we have a new revenue associated with the convalescent project, convalescent through EMS, and at the sixth, January sixth meeting, Greg will be here to give an update on how that's performing, so we can get deeper into the details of that. On the expenditure side, it's worth noting that the budget is about four point seven million more on the expenditure side than last year. Keep in mind, two point seven million of that was with the health plan. We've already taken steps to switch providers. We started that in just a few days on one-one. We started our wellness program, and also we found a cheaper stop-loss provider. We saved about three hundred thousand dollars switching stop-loss providers because of our claim history last year. And eight hundred and eighty-one thousand was for education. So we are ahead of last year's expenditures by about a million eight, but as a percentage of the general fund budget, this year we're at twenty-eight point four-oh percent versus twenty-seven point eight-seven percent last year, a difference of point five-three percent. So I'll tell you a couple of takeaways is quite happy with how the budget's performing. The tax office, Greg and his staff are doing a fantastic job. You can see it from current year and prior year. Just, they're crushing that. November, December, and January are our big months for property tax, so what you see through October is not the bulk of our revenue. That vehicle tax number, we're going to keep monitoring it because it is solidly behind, but we think it can catch up. Sales tax is right on track. Again, there's about a ninety-day lag, so we'll keep watching it. And we're roughly half a percent out on an expenditure of eighty-eight million dollars, so we feel pretty comfortable that the budget is in good shape. If it pleases the Board, I'll come back in February and give like an overview of December. By that time, we'll have half a year closed out and given that, you know, kind of a six month review of the budget. Any questions?
I'd just like to comment and thank you for the hard work you've done on this. I know I've been in communication with you, especially with this health insurance coverage and catastrophic coverage. You saved three hundred thousand dollars when you rebid that, so just appreciate that, and I know everybody in the county does. So, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? I just, Brian, the new insurance company, when will they be issuing cards, the new cards?
The next few days.
Okay. I thought it was the middle of December, so I hadn't seen you.
I don't have, it should be this week or next.
Okay, okay.
It better be.
Yeah.
When did coverage start with the new insurance company then? Is it, when does it start?
One-one.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. Good report. Okay, our next item of the Administrative Agency Reports and Presentations is their Haywood County Cooperative Extension Update on Participation in the Empowering Mountain Food Systems Grant with North Carolina State University. We have our County Extension Director, Bill Skelton, and our Project Director, Laura Lawfer, here tonight. Welcome.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman. My name is Bill Skelton. I'm the County Extension Director here, and just as a quick reminder to you and anybody else watching too, that your Haywood County Extension Center is a partnership between Haywood County and NC State University. With that, we get a lot of expertise from the university to help support our programs and a lot of other benefits, one of which is sometimes the specialists and researchers there on campus and out in the field as well will write nice grants and include us in them, and that's what this one is about tonight, called Empowering Mountain Food Systems. It's all about bringing a little bit more income to the family farm in western seven counties of North Carolina. So Haywood is certainly part of that, and Laura Lawfer is the Project Director, Project Coordinator for this project, and I'm going to let her tell you a little bit more about it. She's the one that wrote the grant, so she knows all the details about it, much more so than I do, but we are going to be taking advantage of this and Laura over the next two or three years. So, Laura?
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight, and we are thrilled to bring this funding to the region. A lot of folks say that some of the NC State Extension work doesn't reach this far out in this part of the state, so we're really happy to do that and to bring some significant resources to the region for local farmers. So I'd like to explain a little bit about what we'll be doing over the next three years. So our goal is to improve the regional food system through education, entrepreneurship, and infrastructure, and really to narrow that down even more, increasing farm and food business income. Who are our sponsors? I do work at NC State. The Center for Environmental Farming Systems was the author of this grant, and of course we work with Cooperative Extension. The main funder for this is the Appalachian Regional Commission, a federal agency that funds parts of the country that have been negatively impacted by the decline in the coal industry. And even though we weren't a coal-producing state, part of our industry in western North Carolina did support kind of, you know, the widgets and the parts to the coal industry, so that made us eligible for this funding. So Department of Commerce encouraged us to apply for this. And also the Cherokee Preservation Foundation is funding half of one of our positions. So we're grateful for all of this support. I'm not going to read this to you. I'm going to give you a card that will explain all of this, that you can keep for your resources. But we do have ten very specific program objectives. We've just finished a regional food assessment. We're going to be doing regional training. We have a very close collaboration with Blue Ridge Food Ventures. We're working very closely with the community colleges in the region, Southwestern Community College, Haywood Community College, and Tri County with the Small Business Centers are very key partners. We are providing advanced business consulting, infrastructure development. If folks need a piece of equipment, we'll be able to support that. We are doing a deep dive into wholesale, retail, and institutional markets. We actually funded, two of the Haywood Nutrition Directors for the Haywood School Systems came to our Farm to School Conference in Raleigh in September, and we funded their participation in that, and the goal is for them to source more food locally for our children in schools. We have a big focus on agritourism in the region, which y'all are doing a really fine job region-wide. Haywood is a stellar example of that. We have a paid apprenticeship program where students who attend Southwest Community College, Haywood, and Tri County in western Carolina received paid positions, twelve dollars an hour, halftime for six to eight to twelve to sixteen weeks over the next three years. And I have a little bit more details about that. And we're working closely with NC Farm Link. William Shelton is based out of Mills River, but he'll be working region-wide. So training and scholarships, again, the example I just gave you about the nutrition directors coming to Raleigh, we funded the support for that. We are funding support for farmers to attend the Organic Grower School, the Business of Farming Conference, even extension agents that want to get increased training, we will send them to conferences and help them. Organic certification, good agriculture practices, animal welfare approved are a couple of examples of what we would help support. Again, the small business support, we're working very closely with the Small Business Centers. We just had an agriculture summit at Haywood Community College last week. Bill was there, as many of our other partners were, to introduce the project. We have a lot of interest from that event. The business counselors at Haywood work one-on-one with our food and farming businesses. We want to help farmers see their farms as businesses. A lot of farmers go into farming because maybe they don't want to be crunching numbers, but we're making the point that, you know, let us help you track your costs and your expenses and figure out what makes good sense for you. That's a real big part of this project. And then we have advanced business services. If you want to go beyond kind of the level of the Small Business Center and you need an attorney to become an LLC, you need to hire a CPA, you need to hire a graphic designer, web designer, we will pay for that, up to fifteen hundred dollars per farm business. Value-added support, I'm sorry, this is a hyperlink you would have in there, it's very bright, with Blue Ridge Food Ventures, we're working with CAFE, the Center for Ag and Food Entrepreneurship. They are also a recipient of ARC funding, and we will supply up to three thousand dollars of support for a producer who wants to take a product from idea to shelf. And so that's, you know, what are the regulatory issues, what are the nutrition label issues, what are the food safety issues, what are the marketing issues, what are the processing issues, we'll take them all the way through getting that product out there in the market. And then this is one of the things that folks are most excited about. We have straight-up grants and loans that we're working with various partners, Natural Capital Investment Fund, the Sequoia Fund, Mountain Biz Works, and we supply a grant for farm equipment. It's required that the applicant work with their Small Business Center directly to come up with an enterprise budget and make a case for why they need those funds. Then we have a cost share for up to fifteen thousand dollars. Farmer himself or herself can supply the seventy percent and we'll supply the thirty percent with no interest. And then with the loans, that's, those are the larger funds that we are working with Sequoia, Mountain Biz Works, and Natural Capital Investment, but this project will pay the thirty percent down of their principal with no interest. So we're real excited about that. The Food and Farm Apprentices Program, I mentioned that earlier. We currently have five positions open, and there's one of the, there's one applicant, I mean, one mentor site here in Haywood County that's Sustainability. This farm is looking for some support in marketing and web design. But our apprenticeship coordinator is actively seeking for mentors, so if you have an idea, if anybody has an idea for a place that could use some extra help, then it's not just, you know, the labor in the field, it's, you know, do I need web design? Do I need help, you know, building a new storefront? Do I want some graphic design? It's everywhere along the supply chain that students are eligible. So these are our current positions. Granville's Garden in Macon County, Werloom Honey and their honey production of mead. Mountain Wise, this is a real exciting program where we are seeking an applicant that will help do the double-up program for SNAP and EBT where your SNAP and EBT card is worth twice as much at a farmer's market. Y'all do a great job of that here in Haywood County. We'd like to expand that to other parts of the region. And then a restaurant, and I mentioned Sustainability. I just want to give you some examples of what this could look like, the apprenticeships, a business planning, say a producer would like to add mail order sales to an existing website, we can help make that happen. Training, a food safety workshop. And we're also interested in helping with the bigger picture. The food assessment has showed us that a food hub probably is not a good idea for the region, but potentially a grower cooperative, if some growers want to get together, pool their resources and supply Harrah's or a hospital or a university. We're very interested in helping that process legally and with equipment. And then finally, NC Farm Link is a program of NC State Extension, and William Hamilton will be working with us in the region in education. And this idea is if a farmer has land that is no longer in production, they don't want to necessarily sell it for another purpose, and then there's another farmer that comes from the other end that wants to start farming but doesn't have the assets to buy land. So we bring those two together to keep that farm in production, and we handle those legal The agritourism program, we're working directly with NC State's Tourism Extension Program that's starting next month. We'll be doing some research in the area and finding out how can we link agritourism to the growing outdoor industry and the natural products industry in the region. So we'll have a series of trainings, and again, supporting farms if they need signage, liability insurance, we can support them financially. Here is just a snapshot of our website, and you'll have that link, and it's really straightforward. They just hit that Apply Now button, and that sends folks into our portal, and they answer a few questions, and then we'll start working with them. So that's it. I just want to keep in mind that, what I emphasize all the time, that this project, there's lots of work we can do in agriculture, but this project is really focusing on increasing farmer income. So, and so farmers have that, the kind of the onus is on them as well to work with us throughout the grant to show how this impact has increased their income. We're not looking at anybody's books, but we want to know what is the percentage of increase you've had because of this participation. That's what the federal government wants to know for sure. So again, I'm thrilled to be here. I moved up here from Raleigh, and it's wonderful, and we've got some good work ahead of us, and so we're asking you to help share the good news. Do you have any questions?
I just wonder, Bill or Laura, have you put this information out on the Farm Service Newsletter, the monthly newsletter that most of the agricultural community in Haywood County receives?
We, I don't believe it's been out on the FSA Newsletter yet, but I can certainly share that with Paula and hopefully make that happen. It has been shared a number of places, I do know that, but I don't know that we've used the FSA Newsletter just yet.
And the FSA is on an advisory council that we're working with in Jackson County, so they're aware, I'm not sure what their regional scope is, but is that just Jackson?
Most of the FSA offices serve two counties, I guess. Our serves just Haywood County, but sure, we can certainly do that. That's no problem. That's a good idea. Thank you.
Right. And we're a staff of myself full-time, and Lisa Gonzalez is a full-time regional area specialized agent. We spend a lot of time going and talking to folks, and so we're happy to have invitations to Rotary, Kiwanis, Cattlemen's Association, Lisa's gone to a few of those, so we're eager to help get the word out.
What crops are most farmers growing that you are helping with in the, for example, in Haywood County?
I guess that, as far as this grant is concerned, or just in general terms?
Yeah, well, yeah.
But we're really just getting started in this grant, and all of them are basically up for grabs, available to be helped out with this. The Sustainability that we mentioned, they're a sustainable farm, it's a vegetable production, a broad range of vegetables, as well as some poultry and small ruminants, I believe. They have a few sheep as well, so.
And we will be working with KT's Orchards. She wants to put in cider vinegar press, and so we're going to help her purchase that item.
Okay, so I was wondering what kind of loans that maybe y'all could be making that you could say, so.
Some folks need some equipment, and so beef production, we would, I would, I'm really interested in talking to cattle farmers to find out, is there a way that we can assist them in getting some more small-scale, direct-to-consumer products out there and how we can help do that?
I was curious, does anybody have any questions? I didn't want to take all the time. I was curious too, has anybody expressed interest in Chinese herbs in our area? Because, you know, our terrain with elevation, I would think, and that's a pretty good cash crop.
Is very similar. Right through here, I've not had many people ask about things. Now, in North Carolina, there are some spots down around the Hickory area, there's a Mong population that has quite a few of those Asian herbs and things as well there, so. But right through here, I'm not aware of anybody that has really expressed that interest. Most of ours, sort of the traditional medicinal woodland botanicals that are part of the heritage that we hear in western North Carolina is what people express interest in.
I just think it'd be neat if somebody would kind of look into that and maybe, I know at INCA, I saw something, they were doing it at INCA, I'm not sure what group it was, it might have been, might have been the group from Mills River, maybe they were talking about, I guess they had some interest in that area over there, but I was just curious if anybody in Haywood County was, because we, you know, I kind of buy some of that, and it's expensive, you know? I would think that could replace, easily replace tobacco and some of your cash crops, and if our elevation and terrain will, you know, sustain that, it would be really a good cash crop for our farmers if they, they might all think of it.
Sure.
I know a lot of people always voice to me that they would love to see a meat processing facility here close by. You know, right now, we have to drive to Man Tooth Meats in Newport, or out in Blue Ridge, Georgia, or KMB Meats out in Needmore. Those are the three closest, and that's several miles, so I, you know, occasionally I get a lot of interest about possibly a startup, you know, on a meat processing facility. Everybody likes a good fresh cut of meat, and you don't, farmers that, you know, butcher their own animals, they have to travel a long way, and that might be a good, something good to look into at some point in time.
Not necessarily part of this grant, but they, I think they are pursuing reopening the small animal processing plant down in McDowell County. But that's just for small animals, birds and rabbits and things, so. But I know we are looking at a number of things, and like Laura said, I think there is a study going on to explore that possibility, so.
Yeah, and Tommy, we have had interest, haven't we, Dave?
Yeah.
Two, we've had, you know, it's, it's on the horizon.
Rely it in.
It's on the horizon.
You can buy, set the hood, rely it in.
A great place to go buy, too. You know, it'd be kind of local, by here, yeah. Anybody have any other questions?
Okay, great. Well, you know, thank you for giving us a little bit of time on your agenda tonight, and if you're interested in learning more about it, a simple internet search for Empowering Mountain Food Systems, and it'll pop right up, so.
Right, yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, I did, under Administrative Agency Reports and Presentations, I did want to let everyone know that the annual audit report from Gould Killian CPA Group will be presented at our next meeting on January sixth at nine AM, so they'll be here then. They just didn't quite have all their numbers, I guess, Julie, so. I know Julie was, she's like me, she went too thrilled that they weren't here yet, so. So anyway, they will be here next time. Okay, we'll move to our next order of business is discussion adjustment to the agenda, and I have one item under number nine, regular agenda, item two. It's the request approval of November twenty-nineteen Tax Collections Updates and Refunds Report to be presented by the Tax Collector, Greg West, and he had an error in that original attachment, and so it corrected Tax Collections. Your-to-date report has been provided to the Board, and I think y'all have that laying here, and we will get that on the website. There was just some typos in that, I believe, Greg, and there's a lot of numbers. I can imagine that that's easy to do, so he's corrected that, and that'll be part of our minutes that'll be presented, and you can comment on that when we get to it. So does anyone have any other discussion or adjustment to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. I'll move on to their consent agenda, which is kind of long, but it'll get us through the meeting pretty fast, I think. We'll just go ahead and start mowing through it. The first item is to request approval of the December second, twenty-nineteen regular meeting minutes. Item number two is to request approval of the revised resolution of the County of Haywood authorizing the purchase of seven twenty-twenty Dodge Durango all-wheel drives and one twenty-twenty Ford Escape, and one twenty-twenty Chevrolet Silverado in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and seventy-one cents to be paid from budgeted funds for this fiscal year. This amount is an increase of eleven thousand four-hundred-and-ten dollars from the original approved amount of two forty-one, eight twenty-two, seventy-one on December second. And the money will be used to pay for the replacement of cloth seats and carpeted floorboards to vinyl seats and rubber flooring for all nine vehicles, and that's under attachment number two. The next item of the consent agenda, number three, is to request approval of Evergreen LLC contract to conduct a pay classification study in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars to be paid from budgeted funds for this fiscal year, and that's attachment three. And I appreciate Kathy. Kathy, she got that down, we had budgeted $50,000, you got that down to $38,000, so I thank you for that. The next item is, number four, is to request budget amendments, and we have four. From the first one is from the General Fund, interdepartmental, it's $3,582 ESC, Annual Unemployment Reimbursement Statement Charges to spread amounts across affected departments, that's under attachment four. Next is from the General Fund, Public Safety Sheriff's Office, $10,081 to appropriate the drug seizure money to cover needed repairs and equipment for two vehicles used for narcotics investigations. That's under attachment five. The next one is the General Fund Animal Shelter, $10,562, and it's a donation from the Friends of the Animal, Haywood County Animal Shelter to cover an additional washing machine to the shelter, that's under attachment six, and I want to give them a shout-out to the Friends for providing that money, that donation for that. And then the last item under budget amendments is from the Capital Project Fund, Solid Waste of Francis Farm Landfield, $23,900 to appropriate the amount of additional engineering services needed for the restrictive cover construction project at Francis Farm Landfield, that's under attachment seven. And then the final item, number five, is to request approval of Gould Killian CPA Group amended audit contract showing a modification to the due date, and that's under attachment eight. Okay, so, does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda?
I don't have a question, but just for clarification, that Evergreen LLC is not our Evergreen, it's a, it's a company that actually conducts pay classification studies, kind of, you know, when I saw that Evergreen, another folks might kind of think that, I just-
Yeah, that's true. And I think there's an Evergreen that's in the mental health field, too, so we've got lots of Evergreens, and it's Christmas time, so.
That's right.
One other comment, you know, when you see somebody donate $10,562 for issue like that, the Friends of the Animal Shelter, you know, you have to recognize those folks for doing that.
Yep.
You know, they put their money and donated that for an additional washing machine, so, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Kevin, I guess that is an additional washing machine, right? It's not a replacement, it's an additional.
Yeah, they needed an extra one, I talked with somebody about that, who was? Was it you, Kathy?
Yeah.
Chris? Do you want to comment? Yeah, Chris, come up and comment on that, if you would, because it's a pretty, that's a pretty significant donation, and I want you to explain why. Chris explained it, and I've slept a couple nights. Thank you, Chris, I appreciate you coming up.
It is for an additional new machine. The building was set up and designed for two. One of those was left out of the original construction based on some cost savings, so everything's there, it's ready to plug in and run as soon as we purchase, and that includes the delivery and installation as well in that cost.
They've actually, no, go ahead, did you have something?
No, I didn't have a question. What, I mean, I'm just curious, what are they washing? What all gets washed there?
Blankets for dogs.
Do what?
We may not want to know.
Well, I mean, it's got to be something that they're going to reuse again, or they wouldn't wash it, so, can't be that bad.
There's a lot of things, it varies from-
I mean, it's okay with me, I just wanted to know, I'm sitting here thinking, what do they wash?
So, janitorial supplies, just a couple of quick items, mop heads, the polyester type can be washed and reused, the flat mops, those are removable polyester, and they can be washed as well, but there's also a lot of dog blankets, cat blankets, a lot of things that line the cages in the kennels, there's some covers for certain beds that are washed daily as well. Most of it is the things associated with animals and less the janitorial.
Okay, thank you.
I know they're pretty good-sized machines.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
I'm a little envious, because the last time I used my machine at home, it was just one of those energy savers, and I thought I needed to put extra water in it, because apparently, you don't wash clothes with as much water as you used to. I can't figure out how the detergent dissolves in those either, but at any rate, that's kind of, it's off track.
I don't think your clothes are as clean either, Kurt, just, you know, so we can all complain about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Chris, I appreciate you coming up and sharing that with us. They have donated, you know, it seems like we did cut things out of the animal shelter that we actually needed, and the Friends of the Animal Shelter have actually paid for several of those items, so.
Yeah, they've really stepped up.
Yeah.
They really have.
Yeah, they have. In fact, I will say, they have donated $750,000 to the county, $750,000, I believe I'm right on that, pretty close, right? Julie, yeah, okay. So, towards the animal shelter, and made that animal shelter a lot better. Okay, now, does any other questions on that, on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, that's approved unanimously. Okay, we'll move to the next order of business, which is the regular agenda, and the first item under regular business is to request approval of the November 2019 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries, and we have our tax assessor Judy Hickman here, this is under attachment nine.
Good evening, I'm requesting approval for the November 2019 releases, refunds, amendments, and discoveries. We had a total of motor vehicle refunds, $419.51, releases were $127,214.72, and discoveries were $32,544.39.
Anything out of the ordinary, is this just normal?
No, the releases, the number's a little bit higher just because we had a couple of exemptions that had failed to be applied, so we had to release that back off the tax bill.
I can see where the people would come in, and you'll discover those at this time when they're paying them, so I can see how you get more traffic. Okay, does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item of the regular agenda is to request approval of the November 2019 tax collections, updates, and refunds, and we have our tax collector Greg West here, and this is under attachment 10, and Greg, you can go ahead and explain the difference there.
Yes, sir. Good evening, commissioners. As of November 30, 2019, the office has collected $19,985,959.73 for a collection percentage We have a remaining real property receivable of $20,126,904.17 for a total since 2010 is $21,224,562. I found an error in our report from 2013, '12, '11, and '10, it was just clerical mistake in the entering process, data entry, and so, there's really a difference of $196,233 that we collected more than what the report originally you have.
Okay.
The revised is, same. We've also collected $735,036 of delinquent taxes since January, or July 1, which I thought was a pretty good amount. And when you were talking about the vehicles that Bryant mentioned, we're just a little bit behind on, they tend to be a little bit slower coming in in the winter time, and picks up in the spring when people are renewing their boat tags and recreational vehicles and things like that, so I think we'll be able to see, and we'll catch back up there on the vehicles in the spring. As far as our refund report, it's just business as usual. We had some people that were able to bring in power statements where they had no power and water to the building, so we released the landfill report, and it's just business as usual there, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Does any questions for Greg? Appreciate the good report.
Yep, we've collected three mil, over 3.4 million this month so far. December, you know, is a pretty busy month, but a lot of these reports, you know, you look at it month to month, you know, week to week, and November, we had, you know, five Fridays, you know, things like that, makes a difference, and so, you know, we had a really good November, and the staff's worked hard, and I'm really appreciative.
Okay. Well, you got some of mine in December, because I think that's when I say most of it.
Hey, we'll take it. I would like to remind all the citizens out there that coming in January 1, they can apply for our senior citizen discount, the disabled veterans discount, you know, that those forms become available in the assessor's office in January, so those are three great programs.
And how long do they have, till June 1?
Till June, uh-huh.
Till June, June 1 or July 1?
I believe it's the end of June, June 1.
June 1, okay.
June 1.
So, they've got to do it in that window of time, and then they'll be good.
That's correct.
And that's for, as long as they own the property, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, the last day to pay without a penalty is?
Will be Monday, the 6th of January.
Okay, and that's coming up, so.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Greg?
Greg, on the seniors, is there any pre-qualifications or anything in particular that they have to do, or just be over a certain age?
Well, the age requirement's 65 and older, and they also have a income requirement is $31,000, maybe $200, I think, and you have to be a full-time resident, that's your full-time residence and stuff, so any questions they have about that, the assessor's office can answer it, plus, we always put that on the back of our tax bill.
Okay.
It'll explain on the back of that, those three programs.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
I'll entertain a motion that we approve the November 2019 tax collections, updates, and refunds.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. You guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next order of business is appointments, and we have none, and then after that, our next order of business is our closed session, and we have an attorney-client privilege, 143-318.11A3, which is a variance litigation case, 19 CVS 1282, Burnett Doyle Sutton versus County of Haywood, and I'll entertain a motion that we move into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the back. Okay, we've returned from closed session, and does anyone have anything further?
I would just like to tell everyone Merry Christmas, I hope you guys enjoy your Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Same here, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and spend some good quality time with your families.
Yeah, I agree, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas from me also, and just remember, 2020's an election year, and there'll be plenty of commercials until March, so, in North Carolina and South Carolina. And I hope, I do wish everyone a Merry Christmas in this coming year and a Happy New Year. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.